I'd like to bring this budget public hearing to order. Marian, can you read the public hearing notice?
The Town Council of the Town of Watertown will hold a budget public hearing on Tuesday, April 26, 2022 at 7:00 PM at Watertown High School, 324 French Street, Watertown. To your comments on the following proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budgets. Town General Fund: $33,583,861. School General Fund: $50,549,438. General Fund total of $84,133,299. The Town Road Aid is $348,918. Water Operations: $1,993,402. Water Capital: $269,000. Sewer Operations: $1,977,644. Sewer Capital: $169,000. Water and Sewer Debt: $300,750. Crest Brook Golf Operations: $723,068. Local Capital Improvement: $151,260. Debt Service Fund: $292,585. The meeting will be conducted in person and available via Zoom in a listen-only mode. A link to the Zoom meeting will be placed on the town website under the calendar of meetings on April 26, 2022. Anyone wishing to present written testimony may do so in writing prior to the hearing by emailing towncouncil@watertownct.org with Budget Public Hearing in the subject line by Friday, April 22, 2022, or by mail to Watertown Town Council, Watertown Town Hall, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. For those attending in person, the public hearing location is accessible to persons with physical disabilities. If you require a translator or accommodations for a hearing impairment or other accommodation, contact the Town of Watertown at 860-945-5255. Date at Watertown, Connecticut, this 11th day of April, 2022. Jonathan Ramsey, Chair, Watertown Town Council.
Thank you, Marian. Anyone that does not have a copy and would like another copy of the budget, there are copies up front here. And also just a reminder, if you guys could silence your cell phone so there's no interruptions. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Allison Villanueva, Superintendent, and she'll start with the presentation from the Board of Ed.
We've been able to take some strides in addressing projects that have been left undone. Very much so, when COVID started, we needed to go from a not one-to-one technology situation to a one-to-one technology situation overnight. That means every single one of our students needed a device in their hands. Every single one of our employees needed a device in their hands, and we needed to know how to do education through technology when we were all remote. So with that, we were able to, with the funding, upgrade our Wi-Fi. We were also able to upgrade our firewall security, which is extremely important. As you all know, using the internet, there are bad actors on the internet that can get in and try to hack in. And so for a school district that has private student data, young students who are utilizing technology, we need to make sure that our security is enforced, and we were able to do that. We're also able to purchase 1,400 Chromebooks for our students and put them into their hands right away. In addition, our SWIFT field, our facilities, were able to be addressed over many, many years of not being addressed. We started to address this one fencing issue that we had at SWIFT, and we were able to do it in one fell swoop, and we replaced that fencing. We were also able to create an adult education manufacturing course for our larger community, for adult education students to come and participate and receive a certificate or credits towards a future program that would then provide them the opportunity to get a job right after the program. As over the last five years, our English language or multilingual population has increased by 75%. The number of students that we service here in the Town of Watertown who speak languages other than English in the last five years have increased by 75%. With that, we were able to buy tangible resources and phase that into all of our schools so our teachers had something to provide those opportunities to our students with. In addition, our special education population continues to grow here in Watertown, and we are very proud to be able to serve those families and students. And we were able to expand up into the high school, a program, and also make more robust some of our existing programs. At the middle school level, we were also able to expand our world language offerings, providing more choice to our students by bringing the language of Spanish down into the seventh grade. We only started in eighth grade, and now we are able to start it in seventh. And developmentally, we know that learning languages earlier on in life is always a much better experience for students. In addition, math resources that had not been replaced in over 10 years were finally purchased. And as we were coming off of COVID, we were able to increase counselor support, social worker support for our students who may have been impacted by COVID. All in all, these colorful blocks demonstrate that when we have the funding, we are able to address unaddressed projects that we need and to fortify that foundation and to take a step forward as our students continue to grow. So here it is, our Board of Education budget is as real as it gets. We use something called zero-based budgeting. Zero-based budgeting means there is absolutely no padding in our budget. Zero-based budgeting is based on actual figures. We have actual figures from what we spend from year to year. We look at where we can cut, where we can become more efficient, and then we go at it so that we build our budget exactly what we need. Sometimes districts do something like they take a number and they just roll it over. We don't do that. We go through the rigamarole of actually looking at every single dollar and every single penny and why we need it, and it has to be justified. Our budget priorities and Board of Education goals, above and beyond the academic and social-emotional and all sorts of other goals that we have for our students, we also, as an organization, need to make sure we're mitigating any potential risks fiscally. We also need to make sure that we're providing continuity of programs for our students. Sorry, that was a mouthful, continuity of programs, and that we are also showing programmatic growth. Children and families come to school districts where there are choices of programs to be engaged in. When there are no choices and no programs, it's not a school district that families and students want to come to. And so we pride ourselves in what we can offer here at Watertown, and we look forward to continuing that. Simply, what do we know we will need next year? We know that we have fixed costs, which I'm about to share in just a moment. We know that we have mandated programs. We also know that we have contractual obligations with our providers from around the community. So we'll go into those details in just a moment. What happens when we underfund the actuals that are real and required? Ultimately, we go underwater, and I'll explain a little bit about what that might look like as well. Here is the total recommended budget that the Board of Education requests for the FY 2223 year. $50,549,438, which is a total percentage increase of 5.11 or just shy of $2.5 million. And I'll tell you where that funding goes. Our people in a school system are the most important. They're the most important because it's our teachers, it's our educators, it's our administrators that have the exact touch point with our students that spend the six and a half to more hours a day with our students. If we have the best people, then we have a good opportunity to provide a great experience for students. So it's not a surprise when you see that salaries and benefits takes up 77.9% of our overall budget. In addition to that, we have six contractual unions that we work with. Our nurses, our secretaries, our custodians and maintenance and IT people, our administrators, our teachers, and our paraeducators. Those are all the people that serve our families day in and day out. The second largest pie of our expenditures goes to special education costs. These are required, they are mandated, and they provide the needs for our students, whatever their exceptionality may be. Year over year, our special education costs are growing exponentially. If I can use that word, I hope I'm using it accurately, because they are growing faster than what our budget lines are. And I'll go into that a little more detail in just a moment. In addition, we have to keep the lights on in our school district, keep the heat running, make sure our water fountains are running, and our cafeterias are in good shape to service food. And so utilities, electricity, all of that is 2.8% of our overall expenditure. Maintenance is a big piece as well, making sure our facilities, our fields, everywhere our students are able to utilize are not only safe but well-maintained so that we look good on the outside, we feel good about where we are and what our grounds mean to us. Transportation is also a large part of our budget. We are responsible for students door-to-door, making sure that we can get them to and from school. And then everything else, and it seems like a silly category, but it's everything else. Literally, the supplies, the materials, the equipment, our athletics, all of that is about 4.7%. And that comes down to the staples, the crayons, the paper, whatever you might imagine in a school. So this is an important chart because we are at a point in our last seven years and moving forward as we project the next few years, at a point where our special education costs are increasing very, very rapidly. The blue line on the bottom there is showing our budget increases over the past seven years, six or seven years. You can see that we have been a town that has been fiscally responsible. We have done our best to try to keep our budget numbers as low as possible, like lots of other towns in the town of Connecticut, sorry, in the state of Connecticut. The red line on top you see is our special education prevalence rate. That means the percentage of students in our school district that have special education needs that we service. You can see that that does not ever really dip, it just continues to climb up and up and up. And as that red line continues to climb up and the blue line continues to stay low, the midsection where you see the shaded red continues to grow wider. The way in which we cover all the costs between the red line and the blue line in that shaded red area is by making sure we cut down on funding in other departments, that we freeze budgets when we need to, that we make efficient ways of moving. But what it does do is that it starts to take away from other programs that other students can tap into or our ability to grow other programs so that we can expand as school district, for not just our general education students but also for our special education students as well. Year over year, you can see that our spending just on special education continues to grow. Last year, we had almost a 3% increase, and this year, we have another 1.35% increase just in special education costs, which is well over $7 million worth of special education costs for this year. That is almost 14-point, can't see it from here, but just a little over 14% of our overall budget just for special education costs. Again, we have been, and we should be very proud of how we have kept our budget fiscally responsible. But as part of my presentation and as part of leading the school organization, I do need to share that we are at a tipping point where we do need to make a concerted effort to address our budget in a way so that we can be able to move forward. So again, these are ways that we have and that are not unfamiliar to our district. Freezing a budget almost happens every year annually. We often underfund in other department areas. We have gone through reduction in force. Last year, we had several number of layoffs. Oftentimes, we don't purchase necessary equipment and resources, and we go without them for a little bit longer or just without them at all, and those are ways in which we make sure that we keep our budget as tight as possible. I do want to share a little bit about a technical term called the MBR, which stands for the Minimum Budget Requirement. The way I look at an MBR is that it's kind of a safety measure for public schools that has been put in place by the state. And what it says in short is that a school district cannot have a budget that comes in less than what they spent the year before. The reason this MBR is in place is because they know that fixed cost contractual obligations alone, being almost 80% of the overall budget, will increase year over year because of contractual obligations. Due to that, keeping a low MBR is definitely important. However, it is important that we also accurately fund an MBR so that we are able to move forward with programs and the needs of our district. The other part too, and I love these photos because funding education is actually an immediate return on investment for any community, and particularly for Watertown. We have a strong school system, it's often what attracts economic development. We have families who want to come here to start businesses, to spend their money so that their families can go to school here and they can grow their families in town. And so by having a world-class school here, we also attract those opportunities for the town in general. So you saw the colored blocks before that were due to the ARPAS, our federal funding. Now, these are blocks that we hope to use this year moving forward with our FY 2223 recommended budget. We continue to want to expand our special education programming. This is very important. If we are not able to provide the programs in district, we are required to outplace our students if we can't provide those services for them here. An outplacement for a single student can range anywhere from 60,000 to 200,000 per student. So it is in our best interest to grow a program here and keep our students at home and also be proud to be able to say that they are serviced here in Watertown. In addition, we also are looking to restore many of the instructional supplies and resources that we had to deplete last year because we cut those lines so drastically. And so once you use up all the paper, once you use up all the books and all the crayons, you need to replace those as well. And I'm being silly by saying crayons over and over again, but there's many more supplies that we also depleted than need to be restored. Security, again, not just virtually but also just on our environment, is very important. We have not upgraded our security cameras in many years in our district, and we have a wonderful opportunity for a 60-40% grant with the state where we can replace our security cameras at Polk and John Trumbull that the state provides the portion of the funding and we take on the local share. We are also looking for summer enrichment programming and tutoring services for our students because we know that COVID has hit us very, very drastically, not just our district but many. And so providing these opportunities over the summer for our families is going to be able to provide continuity in education for these students. And as we talked about, not only are increasing by 75% English language population, our students in general have not had an upgrade in their literacy curriculum in a very long time, and so we need those resources as well. We've thought very carefully to prioritize where our funds will go this year, and this is where we've decided to put many of those funds. Enrollment in Classman's class size is directly impacted by our budget. When we have the people to put into our classrooms, we have class sizes that are reasonable and conducive for the best learning opportunities. When we don't have the people in place, our class sizes increase dramatically, and the experience for our students and our families changes dramatically. So we always keep an eye very close on what our enrollment sizes are and make sure that we try to keep our class sizes as reasonable and manageable as possible. We do receive state and federal grants. We do anticipate that we will receive just over $1 million in federal grants this year, like we do each year. We also anticipate that in state grants, we will probably receive just a little over $13 million. In total, in grants, we should be receiving just a little over $14 million in grants. Although we receive this money, I do want to state that this money has been plateaued over the last few years as our governor's funding continues to stay static and has not increased drastically. We hope that our continued work through our Board of Education members, our representatives up at the state, as well as just our legislators, can do some real advocacy to start to change the grant model so that schools can receive more funding, particularly for special education. This is also a really important slide. Today, I'm presenting to you a 5.1% increase in a budget. But I'm also sharing with you that in some of our most volatile areas, particularly benefits, special education, even our salaries and unanticipated emergencies, we assume a risk when we don't necessarily set aside large reserves for these categories. To keep our budget at 5.1%, I have flat funded each of these areas, which assumes a greater risk in each of these areas. But because these are potential risks, we were able to make that decision to move forward. However, it is important to note and to know going forward that these are areas of volatility and unanticipated costs may come from them. Lastly, well, not lastly, but in addition, we did our due diligence and went ahead and already made some cuts, just around a little more than $600,000 in addition to the flat funding and assuming greater risk in areas to bring our budget down to where it is. These are some of those areas. And then this is lastly, I wanted to share a little bit about a comparison of something called a DURG, DRG, which stands for District Reference Group. The state of Connecticut organizes and categorizes school districts of like, I guess, light, like, social economic status into groups. We are part of Group D. You can see by the names of some of the towns and cities there, we're not like all of them. But what we do have in common is that our median income is about the same. Now, what I wanted to do was just share some districts that are similar to us in size in terms of number of schools. We have five schools in a program, and just share what their budgets are and what their increases are this year. In comparison to, and if we take Newington and Middlebury out because they're just a little bit different from us, but in comparison to some of the districts that are up there that have four to five schools like us, we still come in the least in how much we spend in our Board of Education budget. And even with our 5.1% request for next year, we still have the lowest budget request in comparison to those other towns. We're not far off, but even those couple of hundred thousand dollars make a really big difference in a school district. Now, I also threw in Newington and Middlebury. Middlebury, although they are in DIRG B, they're just our neighbors. And you can see, although they are larger than us, they do spend a substantial amount more money than we do. So this last image, I'll just leave with you, and if anybody knows the term, and perhaps it's cliche at this point, the tipping point. The tipping point can be a very positive thing because once you work really hard to get that ball up the hill, once it goes down, the snowball effect is supposed to be something we capitalize on and say, all that hard work was good, good for something. But the tipping point can also be something that can be detrimental. And in terms of a school district, we continue to work very hard every year to push the ball up the hill to keep our budget low. And at some point, when we keep it too low, the ball can eventually hit a tipping point, and it can fall down the hill pretty drastically and impact us in a negative way. I do think we are at that tipping point, and we need to, right at the top of that hill, change the climate, the landscape of that hill a little bit so that it's not a slope anymore, and change that line of that MBR just a bit so that we can continue to roll that ball up the hill and catch it before it falls down. So with that, just at the bottom again, our school district is always here to serve our families and our students. The student experience is one that's most important to us. We are here to make that the best possible. Our employees, we want to hire and attract the best quality people, and we want to retain them here. And of course, our community impact, not only through our school system day to day, but also when our students graduate, they come back into our community, and we want them to be servants of our community when they come out, and we want to be able to provide them that experience. I thank all of you for listening, and if there are any questions, please do not hesitate to ask.
There we go. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Ramo, Town Manager, Town's Budget.
Good evening. My name is Mark Ramo. I'm Town Manager, and I'm here to present the Watertown Town Council Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. In January of 2021, the Watertown Town Council adopted the mission statement, "In Watertown, we strive to be Litchfield County's most citizen-employee-centric town. We seek to be a town where citizens, businesses, and employees are valued. We're all can count on efficient services, fiscal responsibility, engaging schools, and a safe community." Our Watertown Town Council is made up of our Chairman, Jonathan Ramsey, Mary Ann Rosa, our Vice Chairman, and members of our Town Council that are sitting in the front row, Robert Tassina, Ken Demers, Anthony Debona, Gary Lafferty, Robert Ritalik, Denise Russ, and Rachel Ryan. Thank you for your leadership and all you do for the town and volunteering to take care of the town's business. Our department leadership, I'm not as coordinated as Dr. V is, but I'm trying. Our department leadership is made up of our Town Clerk, Lisa Dalton, our Police Chief, Joshua Berniger, Director of Parks and Recreation, Lisa Carew, Land Use Administrator, Mark Mossad, Finance Director and Assistant Town Manager, Suzette Pong, our Emergency Management Director and Fire Chief, David Bromley, Director of Public Works, Louis Spina, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, Vincent Catarino, and our Fire Marshal, Kim Calabrese. I want to thank you also for your leadership and all the hard work that you went into this budget process. For those of you in the audience, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but the budget process actually starts in November and December where our department heads actually put together their budgets to present to the Finance Director, myself, in January and February. In January and February, we meet and we go over the department's needs, wants, and where they envisioned their department going for the following fiscal year. Our Town Council recommended in April, the beginning of this month, a general fund budget of $33,583,861. That's an increase of $1,858,763. That's an increase of one hu- one million, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, a five point eight-six percent increase. Originally, the Town Council had, there was an additional request of five hundred thousand, and the Town Council decided to make that cut. And we applied American Rescue Plan Act funds to reduce that budget down to that one point eight million dollars. For the town budget, our budget is pretty much, it's not static. So it goes up, it goes down, it moves around during the year. Our grand list drivers for our budget this year, we had an increase in motor vehicle taxes, personal property, real estate. Our significant increase came through our motor vehicle tax, which was twenty-five point forty-two percent. Our personal property was up four point one five percent, and our real estate was up point eight seven percent for a total increase of two million, four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Additionally, we had increases in our revenue that was received from the state. We had an increase in our pilot, our municipal revenue sharing, and our educating, education cost sharing. Our pilot program went up to four hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars. That was an increase of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Municipal Revenue Sharing was increased to three twenty-seven, seven fifteen. This is a program that we received funds back from the state, from our tax, from the state tax revenue. And then our education cost sharing was also increased by a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Our total increase in the revenue side was three million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. This increase has helped mitigate a larger mill rate increase, so it has offset this budget. As I said, when we meet in January and February, the department heads, myself and Suzie Pong, we go through the department heads' wants and needs. Originally, when they, the department heads presented their budget to myself, they had anticipated a one point one three four nine eight three million dollar, I apologize, one point one million dollar increase. And we had talked about it and we put off a lot of those items and cut the budget down to what we are requesting tonight. For our increase, as I said, our original request was thirty-three million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Last year comparative budget was thirty-one million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The increases for our departments were general government, which includes our tax collector, our assessor, our town clerk, smaller departments like that. The total increase for all those departments was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Our public safety, which includes our Police Department and Fire Department, the increase is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Public Works, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Parks and Recreation, a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Miscellaneous Town was nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our debt service, I have good news, went down. We rebudgeted our bonds twice and we had a net savings of a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. This bottom number of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is a new category that was based on a change in software. So we actually broke out our IT department to kind of keep better track of our expenses on the IT side. And because of the new software, it got lumped in with our health services and social services. So the IT budget is actually three hundred and thirty-six thousand. It's not a total increase because these items were actually taken from other departments. Our increased fixed costs, so our wages, employees' benefits, which include workman's compensation, medical, social security, our liability insurance, and fuel, is a one point four million dollar increase on our budget. Leaving only about five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of increases that that was left available for other departments to acquire new equipment or add personnel. Our department heads did a lot of work on their budget presentations. I don't want to steal their thunder, so I'd like our Chief of Police to come up and go into the detail of his budget showing the increases. Chief Berniger?
Thank you. Bar graphs you see in front of you here show the overall budget comparison between fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The very top line is the total budget, but I want to direct your attention to the six bar graphs below. The Police Department consists of six separate budgets. The top one you see there is the Communication Budget, which funds our nine-one-one call-taking center. For both the staff, equipment, and other needs for that center. Next down is our Animal Control Budget, which funds all the funding for our pound and personnel to handle our animal control function in the town of Watertown. Below that is our smallest budget. That's our Traffic Budget, which funds the maintenance and electrical costs for all the traffic signals in the town of Watertown. The Maintenance and Support Budget funds a lot of ancillary costs to keep our supplies and equipment up and running at the Watertown Police Department. The Patrol and Detective Budget, which is our largest of the six, funds the most of our personnel in the Police Department, including the entire Police Union. Below that is the Administrative Budget, which funds administrative staff as well as many of our maintenance agreements and contracts. The total police budget is increased by about only eighty-two thousand dollars, and I assure you, this is about as austere a budget as we could possibly present to the town of Watertown and keep the services of the Watertown Police Department static as to where they are now. If you go to the next slide, please. Thank you. This graph shows the department's six budgets and the increases that are found within each. Back one, thank you very much. The top right, the blue, the twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars is the total increase that we see in the Administrative Budget. This budget does have the personnel from our White Collar Union. That contract did get negotiated within this fiscal year. So the increase you see there is largely contractual wage increases for our secretarial staff at the Police Department. The orange budget that you see there with an increase of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars is our, what we call our Patrol Detective Budget. In this budget is most of our Police Union staff, as well as several other maintenance agreements and equipment costs, including uniform and other accessories. This is a very low increase. It does not, however, represent any wage increases as that contract is currently under negotiation. The Traffic Budget only had a nominal increase of four hundred and eighty dollars, which represents an increase in electrical rates to keep our traffic signals turned on. Animal Control Budget, a five thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollar increase again is entirely contractual wage increases for our animal control officers. And lastly, our Communication Budget is showing an increase of twelve thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, which again is entirely contractual wage increases for our telecommunications in the nine-one-one center. Next slide, please. The primary cost drivers, some of which we've already viewed, reviewed, and I'll run down this list one more time. For our Administrative Budget, the primary cost driver there are the contractual pay raises for the White Collar Union. In our Patrol and Detective Budget, which did go up thirty-one thousand dollars, this does reflect budgeting one additional police officer to bring our sworn staff from forty members to forty-one members. I asked for three additional offers, officers for the Police Department, where you stand right now before you, asking for one in this budget. We have a very large call increase load on our evening shift. Our minimum staffing for patrol officers right now on all three shifts is only three patrol officers in the town of Watertown. For the size of the town of Watertown, in the population of the town of Watertown, and the amount of calls that we do handle on the evening shift, very much want to bring that minimum staffing level on our evening shift up to four patrol officers for the town. Having an additional patrol officer would allow us to put four patrol officers on the evening shift more often than not. This also accounts for a three percent increase in overtime costs and additional monies for the purchase of additional uniforms as we anticipate to hire four new members for the Police Department this year. One again would be that new officer I just spoke of, and we are anticipating three retirements in the next fiscal year. So we will have to purchase uniform equipment for three officers to replace retirees. In regards to the Maintenance and Support Budget, we had a nominal increase of just seven thousand dollars. This money is entirely going to keeping our antiquated and aging radio communication system operational, our radio system, which for all intents and purposes is a computer network. Is going on twelve years old now for a computer system that is getting pretty old. We're currently operating still on a Microsoft Vista platform. Does need significant upgrades, and because of its age, so many components are starting to drop off and needing to be replaced, just like parts on your older car would need to be replaced. So we have budgeted extra money here to take care of repair work on our radio system. The Traffic Budget again was just increased electrical costs. And Animal Control and Communications, the nominal increases you see on those two budgets is entirely contractual pay raises, with the exception of a small amount for a new washer and dryer to be installed at the pound. Am I accepting questions, Mark, or is it? Okay, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Louis Spina, Department of Public Works. Good evening. Louis Spina, Director of Public Works. I'm truly humbled and honored to stand before you tonight and present my first budget. For those of you that aren't aware, Public Works, Works consists of six little budgets or subsets. It's the Engineering and Administration Division, the Highway Division, Snow Removal, Solid Waste, Street Lighting, and Tree Removal. As my first year here, my, my primary objective was to come in as, as close to flat as possible with taking the services into consideration. The net result, what you see before you tonight, last year's budget was three point eight seven million, and, and what you have here tonight is about four million dollars, slightly over four million, for an increase of about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars throughout all six divisions. I highlighted a few of the big drivers, if you will, that compromised a hundred and twenty-five of that hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Last year, we were, for some reason, grossly underfunded in our asphalt line item. In fact, when I got here in October, and before the asphalt plants closed in the fall, we had already spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand on a forty-eight thousand dollar line item. So I deemed that increase necessary to continue to patch the roads in town, which there's quite a bit of work out there for those of you that drive around. The Police Chief alluded to the white collar contract that was recently negotiated that led to a salary increase of about thirteen thousand dollars primarily in the Engineering Division. It does not include the blue collar contract that is being negotiated as we speak. There was an increase in our solid waste disposal fees that is out of our control. For those of you that aren't aware, the state, most states have a solid waste disposal crisis right now. It's very volatile in Connecticut. And we're at the mercy of CRA or MIRA out of Hartford. That's where our trash goes. And we had a twenty-one thousand dollar increase in our salt and sand due to the state of Connecticut bid last season. That does not reflect a forty thousand dollar appropriation that I had to seek at the end of this winter in February to get through the winter. So this budget, as Mr. Ramo discussed, was developed back and submitted back in December. And these are the numbers that I had in front of me at that time. But again, this, this graph here highlights a hundred and twenty-five thousand of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase. It is my opinion that it is bare bones. There are no infrastructure improvement projects included in this. Again, one of my main objectives, objectives this first year is to take a look at some of the projects that we've completed in the past. There are some projects that are, that have been funded in bonds in years past. We're going to work on them. We're going to complete those projects that we have funding for. We'll close out and move some money around from some of the smaller projects that were closed out and will be able to keep ourselves busy through this construction season. But it does, but this budget here does not include any infrastructure improvement projects in the next fiscal year that weren't, that haven't already been funded. And with that, I'll, I'll wrap up my portion of it, and I guess we're going to take questions later. Thank you. Like to invite up Lisa Carew, our Director of Watertown Human, Social, and Leisure Services.
Good evening. Lisa Carew, three eighty-nine Northfield Road in Watertown. Good evening. Let me, thank you for letting me take a few minutes of your time. On Slide One, we have five divisions within the town. And within my department, we have Recreation, Crestbrook Park and Gulf Course, Parks, Social Services, that includes our food bank and fuel bank, and Senior Services, that includes the Municipal Agent. And leave it on this slide, okay, Mark. On this slide, we show that the Recreation is twenty-three percent. Crestbrook Park is thirty-seven percent. Parks, twenty-seven. Social Services, three, and Senior Services are ten. Next slide, please. On this slide, it shows the Town Council recommended for the proposed budget in blue for each of the divisions. And the actuals for this year and that have been approved are in the green. Okay, and the next slide is the quest drivers for the department. For Social Services, this is reflecting the needs in our community for proposing a, from a part-time social services clerk to the position of full-time. The proposed increase is twenty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. In our Parks, the proposed increase is seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, and it includes one additional laborer. Yearly, it also includes yearly state mandated minimum wage increases for our seasonal employees. A sixty-inch field maintenance irving continually needed that we rent currently. It also includes a rack body truck, which would be phase one, which our newest, our newest vehicle in the Parks Department is a two thousand and sixteen Ford Rack Body. The Recreation Bu- Budget, proposed increase is fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And it also includes contractual pay raises for White Collar Union members. Yearly state mandated minimum wage increases for seasonal employees. Masonry concrete repairs to our outdoor pool. And to restore special events to pre-covid sta- status. For Senior Services, we also are increasing it by fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It includes retirement positions that went unfilled, filled for, due to covid. Contractual pay raises, purchase integrated data collection system, and restore programs. Excuse me. For Crestbrook, this is a proposed decrease of four thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollars. And an increase, it includes a contractual labor position, yearly state mandated minimum wage, increase in chemicals, pesticides, agricultural, and required maintenance. That's, and also for fuel. Thank you for allowing me this time and the opportunity to present the budgets.
Like to call up our fire chief, Dave Bromley.
Hello, my name is David Bromley. I'm your fire chief, emergency management director. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. Slide up, please. After initial budget request through the town manager and town council of a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars, our budget is recommended now for postage increases of two fifty. Volunteer fire paper call raised from seven fifty to eight fifty for forty thousand dollars. Post testing increase for seven hundred dollars. Medical services increase to replace funds taken from last year's account, twelve thousand dollars, which covers the physicals for our firefighters. Vehicle maintenance increase, the cost of vehicle maintenance has increased over the years as well as trying to get parts and parts and labor has increased. So we need the twenty thousand dollars more. Increase in medical supplies for emergency services. Building maintenance, this was a new item for us. The town has decided that some of the town buildings are going to be under your own auspice to fix your own repairs. Last year, we had two incidents where our furnace had an incident, fifteen thousand dollars to repair, and an air compressor for another five thousand. So we're going to try to help ourselves out with that. So the town, town council recommended budget was eighty thousand, nine fifty. But out of that, taken already from the department was, or moved to ARPA funds was eight thousand. So our increase is seventy two thousand, nine fifty. Removed from the budget was our length of service four oh one plan, which is a recruitment and retention plan for our firefighters. For a four oh one plan that they get, we asked for seventy five hundred, it was removed. Replacement of a command vehicle, which is our regular maintenance and replacement program, twenty three thousand was cut out. Our SCBA compressor, which fills our air bottles and air tanks, it fires. The current model is sixteen years old. It's rated to be twenty years old. It already has an oil leak. That was cut out. And our communications equipment replacement, five thousand was cut from that. So total requested and not recommended was ninety five, nine, five hundred. Tonight, I'm asking that the town council support your volunteers and restore the length of service funds of seventy five hundred to the budget and use the ARPA funds to restore the line item to the original request. The Watertown Fire and EMS services during this COVID nineteen pandemic continually serve the town of Watertown in Oakville with members putting themselves in harm's way daily, which continues today and in most cases are the only town service that responds to medical emergencies to treat the sum of four, forty one hundred and twenty five residents who tested positive thus far for the disease and the fifty six who sadly succumbed to this dreadful virus. The ARPA funding does have a component in it that was meant to supplement first responder wages for their service for response to communities during the pandemic, which sadly continues today with today's state rate of positivity at eight point fifty one percent. Please use some of the ARPA money for what it is meant for and support your volunteers. Thank you. Any questions?
Just as a wrap up, the town municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Town budget is at thirty three thousand, five hundred, or thirty three million, five hundred and eighty three thousand, eight hundred and sixty one dollars. Board of Education is at fifty million, five hundred and forty nine thousand, four hundred and thirty eight dollars for a total budget being presented of eighty four million, one hundred and thirty three thousand, two hundred and ninety nine. That's an increase of point, five point four one percent, a point five eight mil increase. I did speak with our assessor. I apologize for not updating this slide, but an average assessment in the town of Watertown is about a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars currently. With a point five eight mil increase, it's equal to approximately one hundred dollars for that specific resident. That is all I have. Thank you for taking the time. Turn it over to Chairman.
Just want to thank town manager, department heads, board of ed, and superintendent for their presentations and all their hard work that went into both the presentation, but also the creation of the series budgets. Next, we're gonna open up the microphone for residents to come up. You could speak, say your name and address and any comments you have related to the budget. If you can make it direct them to the point, it'd be appreciated. Anyone?
Hello, my name is Mark O'Brien. Live on Bryant Road in Watertown. When was the last time our town had a zero percent increase? So I'm, I'm here basically tonight to object to any tax increase. We all know inflation is high, we're over seven percent. Three basic necessities, food, clothing, and shelter are all much higher. We all know this. Fuel, gas, home heating oil, everything's much higher there. In better times, the increase would not be an issue. But this year is not a good time. So I urge you, the council members, before the zero percent increase. And if not, come May seventeen, the voters, us, we have the right and the just to say, just to say no to any increase. So just say no, just say no. Thank you.
Again, Al Mickel, ninety five Woodbine Avenue. I'm not sure whether we should vote for this budget or against this budget because I believe it's flawed. I think there's some errors in it. And I'd like to talk about a few of the errors that I think can be corrected. Basically, the charter requires five columns, and one of them is missing from this budget. It's the current fiscal year's expenditures to date. It's a handy thing to have to judge how well the budget is being used and managed, and it's missing. I hope it can be put back there. Now, my next comments dealt with the golf course. Many years ago, when I was standing outside of a polling place, trying to convince people to vote for the budget, a man came up and said, I'm not voting for this budget. I don't golf. And I explained to him, it's an enterprise fund. Tax dollars are not there. And he turned around and voted. I don't know which way he voted, but he voted because he understood that an enterprise fund is not funded by tax dollars. So in this budget, money for the benefits for the golf workers is moved to the general fund from the enterprise fund. This is something the water and sewer enterprise fund, ratepayers, might like. But what it would mean is the people that don't have water and sewer paying for the water and sewer enterprise fund. And this is probably not a good thing because I think the town might be looking for another enterprise fund for ambulances, which I think is a great time, great thing to do. But if you can't manage the energy, enterprise funds, it could be problems in the future. Now, what started me on this was I noticed that the rent from the restaurant is accounted for in the golf enterprise fund. The Director of Park and Rec says it's, the golf course is a pay for play type of fund. I don't think the restaurant plays golf. Now, the contract for the golf pro states the town will pay for twelve hundred hours actually said man hours for golf starters and rangers. Again, that should be paid for by the golfers. So those are some of the reasons I believe this is flawed, and I believe it can be fixed. Now, the school board has mentioned that he's identified some areas of their budget that's at risk. And I believe tonight that can be fixed if the town council funds those risky areas. Now, if they're not needed, then the, it's like an insurance policy, they're not needed. Those funds go back to the general fund, which is, if they are needed, the school board doesn't have to come back and beg for some more, some more money from the general fund. Now, I wonder how I should vote, for I believe is a flawed budget. If we can't get a referendum. Would I have to vote against it? I believe I would if it's flawed. But I want to vote for an unflawed budget. I voted for budgets, for budgets in this town for years. In some years, I had to vote five times. I would like the town council to fix the flaws in the budget. They've been made aware of these problems, and tonight they can make time to correct the mistakes. I would like to vote for an unflawed budget. Thank you.
Catherine Camara, thirty one Cottage Place, Milkville. I will support the Board of Education budget because I really enjoy knowing that it's zero based because I feel that zero based budgeting is the most transparent. And I really wish that the town council would consider doing that with their budget for the next fiscal year. However, I have a real problem with this booklet that I picked up because the booklet is opaque. It's not transparent and it's misleading. And I'll tell you why. There are five positions in this booklet that show no increase. So a person getting this booklet is going, not going to know that the fire chief, the fire marshal, and the executive administrative assistant will actually get a very measly one point five to two point six percent increase. Our finance director will get the usual standard four and a half percent increase. But no one getting this booklet is going to know that the town council wants to award our town manager an eleven point five percent increase, fifteen thousand dollars. So if you pick up this booklet, you think these people are not getting a raise, but they are. As an aside, I want to call out the hypocrisy of those town council members who did not want a budget increase citing that people are hurting with the gas and food prices increasing. Yet they voted for that eleven and a half percent raise to our town manager, who I will point out that in the last over a year has not been able to work with our police chief to hire a deputy chief. I don't know if that deserves an eleven and a half percent increase. Yet these hypocrites don't think that our fire chief, fire marshal, and our executive administrative assistant need gas and food too. There's, there's quite a bit of lopsidedness and, and it's fairly curious because which employees are valued here? We got a, we got an a slide that told us what our mission statement is about valuing employees. Well, I think giving one employee eleven and a half percent increase and other people are barely getting two percent is, is lopsided. I don't see where that's valuing all of our employees equally. Sorry, excuse me, I lost my place. I did write this recently. So certainly, if you wanted to be transparent about our budget, you would have stapled that information into this booklet so that when people pick this booklet up, they actually know who's getting what for raises. But there's nothing here. You think nobody's getting a raise. That's not transparency. But I'd like to go back to the lack of a deputy chief because that approximate, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the taxpayers have paid this fiscal year for a vacant position is going to go back into the general fund. Is that how the council is replenishing our general fund? Are we putting things in our budget that are not actually ever going to be expended? And at the end of the year, putting that in our general fund? Is that how we're bringing up the general fund that was depleted several years ago? Because that's not the way that I want my tax dollars. I find that to also be opaque. It's not transparent. I've asked about ninety five hundred dollars that's in the budget for something with public works, and I didn't get an actual response to exactly what that money would be spent for. Is that because that's going to go back into the general fund next year? These are the questions that people who pay attention to what's going on ask themselves. And I agree with Al Mickel. Why is this budget booklet different than it has been in other years? It shows us the adopted budget rather than the actual expenditures like it used to. So that people who really want to know could actually ask some intelligent questions because they have the information in the book, but it's not there anymore. We've suddenly adopted a different way to write this book. Instead of becoming more transparent, it's more opaque. I won't support this budget. I won't vote for one town employee who's already, in my opinion, overpaid based on education and experience to receive an eleven and a half percent raise while longtime experienced employees with a lot of knowledge in their field will get less than two and a half percent. And I say shame on the council for asking us to do that to any of our employees. You're not meeting your mission statement. Thank you.
Anyone else? The town, yeah, the town council will have another meeting after this one, so you guys could say anything you want now or save it for the next meeting. Wait, any closing comments from the Board of Ed? Mr. Chairman, would you prefer that we comment now or is there an opportunity afterwards? I don't, I don't recall. Sorry, say that again?
No.
No, okay. Then I guess I will go. Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Rosa, Town Council members, Mr. Ramo. Thank you for your continued support of Watertown Public Schools. In each of the last seven years that I have participated in the budget process, the last six as a board member, it seems to always be the same. Our superintendent, along with their cabinet, creates a budget based on their needs, not their wants, but their needs. And each year, we're asked to cut. And each year, at some point, we end up implementing hiring freezes, spending freezes, and we ask our, our staff to make do with what they have. And they do every year. And they do, every year. They don't complain. They just go about their work, teaching our children, and managing our buildings as best they can with what they have. Each year, we see the expenses that we are contractually and legally obligated to pay increase. And as Dr. Villanueva has clearly demonstrated, the increases in budget have not adjusted at the same rate as the increases in those obligations. We fill those holes, often in ways that are not easily seen, but they have an impact. They have an impact in many areas. It's never been a good time to properly fund Watertown Public Schools. At least not in the last seven years I've been around, and I'm sure there are plenty of people in town that will argue it's been at least 10 years. In collaboration with her cabinet, Dr. Villanueva has sharpened all of her pencils and has presented to the town council multiple times the innermost details of our budget and why it is what it is. She has explained at length why we are asking for what we are asking. Dr. Villanueva has also described a certain level of financial risk that she is taking with this budget. Two weeks ago, Ms. Keshuba, the district's business manager, gave the board a financial update, where at the end she described that we are about $500,000 over budget. But she feels confident that everything will fall into place and within budget by the end of the year. Do you recall that the town council cut $500,000 from our budget last year? That means that what we requested was more in line with what we needed. But yet again, our teachers and staff had to go another year with the rationing of supplies, freezes on spending and hiring, and making more sacrifices. I understand the landscape. No one wants their taxes to go up, especially in Connecticut, where it feels as though we're being taxed to death at every turn. Public education, however, is a cornerstone of every community. Its impact, you are all very much aware. We continue to manage unfunded mandates, state laws, new curriculum requirements, and contract negotiations that can easily lead to binding arbitration, all of which have a financial implication on Watertown Public Schools. We continue to allocate budget dollars to infrastructure maintenance, while we await bonding to fix facilities in great need of repair. We have taken more advocacy role by petitioning the Education Committee in Hartford to change the excess cost grant calculation methodology, which would lend significant relief for special education expenses. However, that will take time and will require more towns to do the same. Regretfully, there is no buffer left. Years and years of underfunding have led us to this point. This Board of Education continues to act as faithful stewards of taxpayers' money, using the utmost discretion and responsibility. However, failing to properly fund Watertown Public Schools will hinder our ability to overcome the challenges created by the pandemic over the last two years and grow our district programming and student support services to what we need and where it deserves to be. I implore you to not cut our budget and send the originally requested amount to referendum and let the people decide. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Dr. Villanueva made some important points in her presentation this evening, but one that should stick out is that how families want to move into Watertown. For many years, Watertown has been a desirable community for young, growing families. With continuous mandated cuts made to the Board of Education and the town budgets, it is making it very difficult for Watertown to be desirable. Of course, a 0% increase would be great, but it is not realistic. How could we expect the Watertown Public Schools to keep up with advanced curriculum, rigorous classes, and a variety of programs and electives which allow our students the education they deserve in this ever-changing competitive world? With a 0% increase, how are our, how will our town maintain and repair roads and buildings? How will we beautify our town, and how will our property values increase or even stay the same? We continue to do more with less. We can no longer do that. It's been said that this is not a good year for an increase, but we've been hearing that every year, and all we do is kick the can down the road. It is now time to give back to our schools and our town. I'm asking that you accept all the budgets, and please allow it to go to referendum and let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Once again, I just want to thank everyone that came tonight.
I'm sorry, we have one more.
I just want to say that those of us who sit on the board went through every presentation, every line item, and every meeting alongside Dr. Villanueva. As a person who's lived in this town, raised her children in this town, support this town in every way I can. I'm a senior. I hear all of the reasons why we shouldn't have a small increase. I hear, and I turn to Dr. Villanueva and Rob, who really pore over those numbers, that maybe it's $4 to $8 a month. To me, those students that I stood alongside for 38 years here look at as adults who chose to stay here and raise their own families. I owe them the opportunity to provide them the quality education that my own children were afforded. Doesn't mean I make a sacrifice somewhere else. I mean, the hard part for me is to sit here as a citizen and a taxpayer and try to understand how such a small, even in hard times, increase, which could mean all of those new and supported programs for all of our children in our district. So I implore, I go beyond asking that our town council allow the voters to make that decision, because I believe there's many people across all economic groups and all ages that want Watertown to be the community that supports each and every citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I just want to thank everyone that came, that participated, feedback. Once again, the department heads, town manager, Board of Ed, Superintendent for all your hard work through the budget process. This hearing comes to a close roughly 20 minutes from now. The town council will meet again for their special meeting to determine what budget goes to referendum. Thank you. I'd like to call, I'd like to call this Watertown special, Watertown Council's special meeting to order. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and truly public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, please?
Jonathan Ramsey, Ken Demiers, Robert DeSina, Robert P. Cat, Denise Russ, Rachel Ryan.
Thank you very much, and is motion.
I move that the following budgets be approved and sent to referendum, finalizing the following changes. Reduce the town general fund budget by $200,000. Reduce the school general fund budget by $200,000. Reducing the fund balance by $400,000. By zero. Oh, the fund balance, okay. The town general fund would be $33,353,861. The school general fund would be $50,349,438. For a general fund total of 837 million, no, 83,703,299. Sewer extension, 70,000. Water operations, 1,993,402. Water capital, 269,000. Sewer operations, 1,977,644. Sewer capital, 169,000. Water and sewer debt, 300,750. Crestbrook Golf Course, 723,68. Town Road Aid, 348,918. Local capital improvement, 151,260. And the debt service fund, 292,585.
And is there a second? There's a second discussion? Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed the amount that this would actually bring a percentage down to.
Yep, I can give you that information. It would decrease the mill rate by about 20, or .21. So that would mill rate would decrease from where it's currently at at .58 by .21. So about .36, .37 of a mill increase, which would be should be right around 1%, 1.07 of a tax increase.
At a recent council meeting, I made a comment that I wanted to see a zero-based increase. I felt with today's economy and what we're all going through, that that was very important that we, as a council, do. I'm a senior citizen living on social security, so I know how it feels. Then we looked at the numbers, and because the town manager and the superintendent of schools, in my opinion, did not leave any leeway in their budgets, cutting to zero would mean we'd have to take money out of the general fund in order to reduce the budgets. Or in order to meet the budgets and reduce the mill rate. To me, that has a very large impact. I understand that it would affect our bond rating and a lot of other ratings in town that have to do with how we save our money and how we spend it. I'm in a hard position. I, you know, do I vote to cut anything? Do I vote to cut nothing and let the people decide? Or do I use my judgment after sitting here for 13 years? What do I think is the best thing for the town? I think the Board of Ed has a very honest budget. And unlike some people, I think it is transparent. Maybe because I've worked with them on it, that I know how much time and effort they put into it. I feel the same way about the budget that Mark has put together for the town and all the department heads, and what they've gone through to pare our side of the budget down to next to nothing. So I think putting back those dollars that we need is just not an option that I can support. I don't want to see layoffs, and I don't want to see our bond rating decrease. So even though I don't like it, I'm going to vote to send this to a ballot and let the people decide if they can live with that very small increase of 1%. Which is what, under what, $85, $90 a year? Maybe a little less.
Any other discussion?
I don't support making any cuts to the budget. I can't remember if it was Mr. Murkowski or one of the other members of the Board of Education who said there's never a good time to support the budget. That's the theme that comes up every year. I've lived in Watertown for 22 years, and that, it's like a broken record. And I, I just think it's irresponsible at all to cut anything from this budget, especially for the children of our town. And so I, I am just completely opposed to that. It is, I think, if I have the numbers right, I couldn't hear everything that Jonathan was saying, but I believe there's a $100 tax increase for the average voter for the entire year. Is that correct, from the original? And I understand where Marianne's coming from, and social security and fixed income, that certainly is, is a challenge for our seniors. But that is not something that is insurmountable. Sorry, that's a double, double negative. That is perfectly acceptable, I think, for people in the town to support that tax increase, because it is what our children need and what we need for our town services.
Any other discussion, comments?
Yeah, I myself feel that we can't cut anymore on, on both sides of the budget. And, you know, seeing what everybody goes through during the year, the same thing, you know, I know the senior citizens are hurting, everybody's hurting. And I just feel that, I, I can't see where else we can cut if we have to cut. And I'm just, I'm going to be in favor of keeping it where it's at now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just a couple of comments. You've heard people say they want the mill rate to stay the same, no increase at all. That wouldn't mean a $1.1 million cut to the budget, either Board of Ed, town side, or a combination of both. As I said at our last meeting, I think that's very reckless. I think it's too much of a cut. Could we cut some? Yes, I think 1.1 million is going too far. There's been a lot of comments related to the state of the economy and things of that nature. One of the numbers I looked up today was the unemployment rate for the US. It literally is identical to what it was prior to the pandemic. So using the pandemic as the excuse, the world's falling apart, we need to cut costs, do this, to me is a, is a false argument. The state of Connecticut, I believe it was 4.6, and US as a whole was 3.6 unemployment, which in many cases, I mean, anyone, or most people that want a job could find a job somewhere. Yes, there's always some that can't, but most can. I also started looking at other towns, just to see what they've been doing with their budgets in the current year. There were previous comments made about other towns keeping a zero increase in their mill rate. The ones that I found included a revaluation to their assessed values. So it's a false sense of security of keeping the mill rate level when you know property values have been going up, and if they just did the revaluation, we know values are higher, that mill rate will drop like a rock. A year or two from now, we'll finish our reevaluation. Most likely, the same thing will occur. I mean, we're at 3.4, 5, 6 for a mill rate. With that reevaluation, that year, it will drop. What it will be, can't tell you, but probably drop to low 30 mark. What it will be, can't tell you, but probably drop to low 30 mark. And like I said, most towns, I mean, Seymour, Bethel, Newtown, I mean, they're all going up. And most of them are going up by more than 1%. Some are going up pretty significantly. And as I said in the past, I mean, one of the reasons why I got on the town council over eight years ago is, I mean, I've lived here since I was three, went through the public school system, went to college, got a job, so on and so forth. And my one and only goal is to move the town forward, to advance the town. If we're willing to cut, not even knowing where, just to get the mill rate to no increase, as I said, I feel like that's reckless. That's not helping the town. I mean, it might feel good. Yes, we succeeded in getting a zero-mill increase. But come next year, same time, guess what? Just to cover the salaries, let alone any other increase we'll run into, it's going to be a huge increase. It's going to hurt a lot more people than a 1% increase that we have now. As you said, the schools, I mean, done presentation after presentation of all the different costs. We've had the public say, you know, inflation, it's definitely real. It's going to hit all of us. At the same time, as it hits us individually with gas prices, electric prices, get a contractor to do any work, guess what, it's double what it was three, four years ago. The same thing is true with the town. They need something repaired, the cost is going to be higher. Their gas bill, it's going to be higher. Electric bill, it's going to be higher. We have all our town trucks that are out there on the streets. Gas isn't cheap. If it's not cheap for us, it won't be cheap for the town. That's why I think the budget as modified with this decrease, I think it's very responsible. That it, the increase that they need to cover a lot of those inflationary costs, a lot of the contractual costs with salaries, it's there without any type of huge increase or burden, burden at the town level. Point 3, sorry, point 3 to whatever it was, mill rate. I mean, that's still one of the lowest increases in the mill rate that we've had in the last decade. So I think that there, I mean, it shows that department heads, town manager, Board of Ed, I mean, they work very hard to get the numbers where they are. And any further cuts, it's going to hurt. I mean, there will be layoffs. I mean, people say, oh, no, they won't really lay off. Right? If you're talking $1.1 million, right? And there's only so many trams that you can't buy. I mean, it's, it's going to go a lot deeper than that. Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All oppose? Got that? Yep. Motion fails. Is there another motion on the table? Rachel?
I move that the following budget be approved to be sent to referendum. And that was the original budget that was approved by the town council. And I believe that is the general fund total of 84,133,299.
There's a second. And just to clarify, that is 33,583,861 dollars for the town general fund. $50,000, sorry, 50,549,438 for the school general fund. For a total general fund is, Rachel mentioned, of 84,133,299. Any discussion?
I have a few comments. So I am against voting for this budget if it's anything above zero. I believe that the townspeople are hurting. When your oil tank gets filled at $800 to fill your oil tank and you're going to the gas station and it's $70 to fill your car. And you go to the grocery store and groceries are out of control. I think this is our year to dig deep. I believe that our, our mill rate should be set at zero this year. We had $7 million in the bank. That is the townspeople's money. On top of that, there's $6 million of ARPA money, bringing it up to $13 million that's in the bank. It's time for us to look at the townspeople and use some of that money for them in a difficult time that we're in currently right now. And I know that you said that the economy is good. Not in my book, it's not. You know, I live a very modest life here in Watertown. Born, raised my entire life in Watertown. And I think this is the year that you have to go at zero to protect the elderly, to protect the, the, the people who can't afford groceries right now. We have to come in at 0%.
Through the chair. The, the general fund, Marianne mentioned that the rating would get hurt if we considered borrowing money from the general fund. So the last time we borrowed money, how bad did our rating get hurt? I don't recall if... Can somebody in the room answer that? Just a quick, did it go up or down?
Due to the appropriation that the Board of Ed needed.
Right. So with that said, the rating didn't go down and we borrowed whatever we borrowed to...
It's considered a negative outlook on our AA. If we end up taking from the general fund one more time, a fund balance, the negative outlook would then change to a downgrade.
Okay.
They give us one year to replenish the fund balance from what was taken. That's what the negative outlook was all about. And if we do that, that's great. They'll take the negative outlook away.
Right.
But if we still borrow from the fund balance, we will be downgraded at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I'm a member of the ARPA committee that's looking at the funds. And I just would like to remind everybody that that's not free money. That our taxes have covered that money. That's money that went to the federal government in terms of income taxes. And that money does have specific guidelines on it and we now have a little bit more of a leeway. But that does not mean that we should take that money and then do what four members of this town council would like to do, which is have a zero-mill rate increase because that is irresponsible. The committee has been talking about a lot of really important functions that this town needs, including things like a ladder truck for the fire department and some other things that Chief Bromley mentioned in his presentation, such as just the modest amount of money of $7,500 to provide retirement accounts to try to get new members to volunteer for our fire department. And, and it is extremely important for us all to remember that those men and women volunteer and save the town millions of dollars because we do not have to pay our firefighters, except for the measly amount of money that they get for a call. I think it's also important to rely on facts and not on emotions. We, I keep hearing the word "I feel like" and then exaggerated dollar amounts like $800 and $70 to fill up oil and gas tanks. I think it's really important to use the facts. And we've heard from experts in all of the department heads, from our school board, and these are the dollar amounts that they need at the bare minimum to provide the services that we all deserve in this town. And taking the money out of the ARPA accounts just to cover these funds so that people can claim, "I didn't raise your taxes for political purposes," is not good enough. Those mon, those funds are there to help the town in other ways and they will be spent in the best possible way. But doing this end run and trying to save money in this way is doing a disservice to the members of our town who could use a new ladder truck, who could use beautification and safety improvements to the sidewalks in the town. So that is why I think that we should have the budget as I just proposed because that is what the town needs and it was best for the town moving forward. And taking the ARPA funds is not the right way to go.
Just to elaborate a little bit on the ARPA funds. We did already allocate, I believe it was 580,000 for the air packs for the fire department. And then there was also, leading up to this budget, we also pulled roughly a half million dollars out to use ARPA funds for certain one-time costs, if it's a piece of machinery, things of that nature, which is one of the allowable uses.
Can you hear me? General question. The intent and purpose of the ARPA funds, is it to improve, to, to improve the town or to assist these towns that have gone through this pandemic?
Yes and yes. There, you can get somewhat large books on different examples and recommendations related to ARPA funds. Some of it could be donations to nonprofits, donation to the food bank. Other examples are fire trucks, ambulances, things of that nature. There was definitely a focus on health and safety. There's also focuses on outdoors, outdoor recreation, outdoor street escapes, things of that nature. There's also a focus related to broadband internet, the areas that are under provided. So those are the types of things that were in documentation related to the ARPA funds.
Yes. Well, in, in my view, that money was as a result of the pandemic that everyone went through and everyone's still going through to a large extent. So that's how I view it.
Through the chair if I can. I, I have to respond to Rachel's comments. One, I do own my house and I do, and I did pay $800 for oil. I don't live in a house that's provided for me. So I just want to get that straight. And ARPA funds were used to lower the gas price in the state of Connecticut for the 25 cents. And as you, everybody knows and can see out there, the gas prices are starting to come back up again, even though the 25 cents was taken off.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. And just as a reminder, it's based on what we, the town council voted at our last meeting to bring to public hearing, which is the total general fund, total of 84,000, sorry, 84,133,299. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I move to approve the referendum notice for the mission code on 2022, 2023 budgets as follows. A referendum of electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meeting of the town of Watertown will be held on Tuesday, May 16th, 2022, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to vote for the approval or disapproval of fiscal year 2022, 2023 budgets. Voting will be at the following polling places. Voting District 6801 is Watertown High School, 324 French Street, Watertown. Voting District 6802 is Jutson School, 124 Hamilton Lane, Watertown. Voting District 6803 is Swift Middle School, 250 Colonial Street, Oakville. And voting District 6804 is Polk School, 437 Buckingham Street, Oakville. Persons qualified to vote in town meeting who are not electors shall vote at the office of the registrar, 61 Ecolake Road, which is the former Hemingway Park School, Watertown, Connecticut. Absentee ballots may be obtained at the town clerk's office.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes? Let's just do that again real quick. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Place on the voting machine as follows. Shall the fiscal year 2022, 2023 town general fund budget be approved in the amount of 84,133,299? For year 2022, 2023 budgets be approved in the amounts of sewer extension 70,000, water operations 1,993,402, water capital 269,000, sewer operations 1,977,644, sewer capital 169,000, water and sewer debt 300,750, Crestbrook Golf Operations 723,068, town road aid 348,918, local capital improvement 151,260, and debt service fund 292,585.
You'd like to start that motion over, unfortunately?
Of the two budgets, I was only supposed to read the towns. So shall the fiscal year 2022, 2023 town general budget be approved in the amount of 33,583,861? And the following fiscal year 2022, 2023 budgets be approved in the amounts as stated, I read previously? Yeah. Shall the fiscal year 2022, 2023 school general fund budget be approved in the amount of 50,549,438? Voters approving each question will vote yes, and those opposing each question will vote no.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn? Second?
Don't move.
Have a good night.